Let's start momentarily. I'm just going to need you to take us out of the practice session on Zoom. Just a reminder for all board members, the microphones that we have are on mute. Press them once, then we'll take them off mute, and then you can speak. Please put them back on mute afterwards. Just give us one moment, Dr. Morty, for us to get the livestream running. Dr. Morty, bring it in, will you?
Thank you very much. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. Webinar ID for this meeting is 869-2340-8901, and the required password is 914236. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Rooker.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Ms. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Devenero.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise. Dr. Morty.
Here.
And student representative, Gabby Morcetti.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda. This meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on March 27, 2024, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Salute to the flag. Ms. Jensen, will you lead us in the salute?
Leading the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do need an executive session in the beginning of our meeting this evening, so we need a motion to recess to executive. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Hughes. He should be back in about 15 minutes. Thank you.
All right. All right, I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Hughes. All right. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions and your new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please provide your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Gallo. We are officially open to the public. Proceeding now and coming forward at this time. Motion to close the meeting to the public. Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know it was in the beginning.
If it's related to an item on the agenda. Okay. Motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, and second by Mr. Gallo. And before our Mawa Student Representative Report, if you don't mind, I just thought we would take a moment, have a moment of silence for an alumnus who we lost, Ava Razmussen. And she was part of the class of 2023, and she had a long battle with cancer, and unfortunately she passed away on the... Yeah, about a week ago or so. Anyway, so I thought let's just take a moment. All right, thank you very much. Our student representative. We can't hear you two. Just maybe come closer. Yeah, there you go.
So, our Model UN Club participated in a conference at St. Peter's University recently, and then our Action Through Athletics and FCA Clubs collaborated on a 3v3 basketball tournament where there were 22 teams, and they were able to raise $270 for the Marcus Cale Scholarship. And then our Gems Club hosted a district-wide STEAM night for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, which went well. And then we have our SCL Spirit Week this week to promote the different SCL competencies, so students dressed in different attire to represent each part, which was social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and self-awareness. And then our Interact Club collected 60 prom and formal dresses that will be donated to those in need at Patterson High School and Grace's Closet in Rutherford. Our Winter Guard competed at Monroe Township High School and earned a score of 84.4, which was 13 points up from their last show. Then our Robotics Team competed at Warren Hills Regional High School last weekend, and they had five wins and three losses, so they're making good progress in their competitions. And then our Symphonic Band earned a gold rating, which is the highest, at North Jersey Region One Band Festival, and earned Best Percussion. And then Junior Luke Folaro also earned Best Soloist on Euphonia. And the band was also one of the top four Region One Bands out of 40, so we've been invited to perform in the State Gala Concert on April 28 at TCNJ. And going to the State Gala Concert is the highest honor a concert group can receive in the state of New Jersey, so that's very exciting. And then Mr. Pelletier was selected to be the Athletic Director's Section Award Recipient for North One, and he got his award two weeks ago from the Director of Athletics Association in New Jersey and Atlantic City. And then we had our Junior Formal last week, which was very successful, so we want to thank our class advisors for that. We had special education students participate in the Dare to Dream Leadership Contest at Rockville College last week, where they presented projects on stress management techniques and brain boosting activities to other students. And then 39 students competed at the New Jersey Future Problem Solving and Community Problem Solving Staple, where they won a variety of awards, and they're invited to the Future Problem Solving International Conference at the University of Indiana. And then the Thunderbird Choir, under the direction of Ms. Morgenweb, participated in the Second Annual Crescent Lighting for Ramadan at the Township Municipal Center. And our Sprint Sports also started recently, so they're going well.
Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Turo. She just cut down your report a bit.
Yeah, I went for 10, no doubt, too. But the two are good. This is from Joyce Kilmer, Ms. Schaffner. She sent us an email, which I was really excited to share with the board. It says, "Good morning. The students enjoyed the perennial math contest yesterday, particularly the fourth graders, who would cheer together for their team between the questions. There were 23 fifth-grade teams competing, and our JK teams placed second, fourth, and fifth out of the 23 teams. In grade four, there were 32 teams competing, and our teams placed second and sixth. Beyond just the math practice, I think the students learned a lot about functioning as a team and group consensus. The second-placed teams will both be invited to the National Championships on May 16 and 17." So, congratulations to Joyce Kilmer, and thank you, Ms. Schaffner, for continuing to do great things with her kids over there. That's one. This is more of like a one B. It was talked about along the lines of the Gems Night, which we were able to attend. It was absolutely fantastic. Ms. Loesch and her students in the Gems Club did a great job of welcoming our Rambo Ridge students to take part in a number of different activities. I'm happy to report, at your tables, you'll see there's a press release that's going to be sent out about that, along the lines of what the Gems Club is all about, and also the experience that took place at the T3 Building. So, we're really excited about getting that information out to our community. And last but not least, I know I said two, it's more of a 2.5. I just wanted to thank all those community members who came out to our first T-Bird Talk. Ms. Devenero, I'm sorry if I'm taking your thunder here. I'll just be very brief. It was great. Dr. Fair and I, as well as the Community Relations Committee, were able to speak to the community about various things that are happening, things that they feel are going well in a school district, but also things that we need to take a look at and refine moving forward. We have one member here, I'm not going to call her out, who was at that night and we greatly appreciated everything that was shared. We're going to take that information in. We're going to take a look at what we're doing and try to adjust and refine, and I'm happy to report, prior to the end of this year, we wanted to get one more in. So, Tuesday, May 28 at 6:00 PM, we're going to have our second T-Bird Talk at Mawa High School, the Thunderbird Think Tank. So, everyone, please mark your calendars. We'll make sure that we send out reminders as well. It's open to all, not just our families of the students in our community, but also community members across Mawa. So, just wanted to share that. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Dr. Turo. Mr. Blaker, you have a presentation for us this evening.
Yes, just give me one moment to get it broken here. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much for the patience while I was getting set up. Tonight is going to be the second presentation for the 2425 school year budget. This is the first, the second, excuse me, we have four presentations. We did one at our last meeting on March 6, where we introduced the preliminary budget that was sent down to the county office. They have that now. They're conducting a review of it. At that meeting, we spoke about some of the revenue sources and the ultimate tax impact that the preliminary budget has on the township. We also spoke briefly about debt service and special revenue. For tonight, we're going to be discussing Special Education section of the budget, as well as tuition benefits and operations. And then we have
All right. All right, I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. Kismarski, second by Mr. Hughes. All right. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions and your new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. You are here as an individual, please provide your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Gallo. We are officially open to the public. Okay, proceeding now and coming forward at this time. Motion to close the meeting to the -- oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know it was in the beginning.
If it's related to a --
It's on the agenda.
Item on the agenda, okay. Motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, and second by Mr. Gallo. And before our Mawa student representative report, if you don't mind, I just thought we would take a moment, have a moment of silence for an alumnus who we lost. Ava Razmussen, and she was part of the class of 2023. And she had a long battle with cancer. And unfortunately, she passed away on the -- Yeah, about a week ago or so. Anyway, so I thought let's just take a moment. All right, thank you very much. Our student representative.
Okay, is this on?
We can't hear you two, or just maybe come closer. Yeah, there you go.
Okay. So our model UN club participated in a conference at St. Peters University recently. And then our Action Through Athletics and FCA clubs collaborated on a three-v-three basketball tournament where there were twenty-two teams and they were able to raise $270 for the Marcus Cale Scholarship. And then our Gems Club hosted a district-wide STEAM night for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, which went well. And then we have our SCL Spirit Week this week to promote the different SCL competencies. So students dressed in different attire to represent each part, which was social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and self-awareness. And then our Interact Club collected sixty prom and formal dresses that will be donated to those in need at Patterson High School and Grace's Closet in Rutherford. Our Winter Guard competed at Monroe Township High School and earned a score of eighty-four point four, which was thirteen points up from their last show. Then our Robotics Team competed at Warren Hills Regional High School last weekend, and they had five wins and three losses. So they're making good progress in their competitions. And then our Symphonic Band earned a gold rating, which is the highest, at North Jersey Region One Band Festival, and earned best percussion. And then Junior Luke Valero also earned best soloist on Euphonia. And the band was also one of the top four Region One Bands out of forty. So we've been invited to perform in the State Gala Concert on April twenty-eighth at TCNJ. And going to the State Gala Concert is the highest honor a concert group can receive in the state of New Jersey, so that's very exciting. And then Mr. Pelletier was selected to be the Athletic Director Sectional Award Recipient for North One. And he got his award two weeks ago from the Director of Athletics Association in New Jersey and Atlantic City. And then we had our Junior Formal last week, which was very successful. So we want to thank our class advisors for that. We had special education students participate in the Dare to Dream Leadership Contest at Rock Hill College last week, where they presented projects on stress management techniques and brain boosting activities to other students. And then thirty-nine students competed at the New Jersey Future Problem Solving and Community Problem Solving Staple, where they won a variety of awards. And they're invited to the Future Problem Solving International Conference at the University of Indiana. And then the Thunderbird Choir, under the direction of Ms. Morgenweb, participated in the Second Annual Crescent Lighting for Ramadan at the Township Municipal Center. And our Sprint Sports also started recently, so they're going well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comprehensive report this evening. All right, Dr. Turo. She just cut, she just cut down your report a bit.
Yeah, I went for ten, no doubt two. So, but the two are good. This is from Joyce Kilmer, Ms. Schaffner. She sent us an email, which I was really excited to share with the board. It says, "Good morning. The students enjoyed the perennial math, perennial math contest yesterday, particularly the fourth graders, who would cheer together for their team between the questions. There were twenty-three fifth-grade teams competing, and our JK teams placed second, fourth, and fifth out of the twenty-three teams. In grade four, there were thirty-two teams competing, and our teams placed second and sixth. Beyond just the math practice, I think the students learned a lot about functioning as a team and group consensus. The second-placed teams will both be invited to the national championships on May sixteenth and seventeenth. So congratulations to Joyce Kilmer, and thank you, Ms. Schaffner, for continuing to do great things with her kids over there." That's one. This is more of like a one B. It was, it was talked about along lines of the Gems, the Gems Night, which we were able to attend. It was absolutely fantastic. Ms. Loesch and her students in the Gems Club did a great job of welcoming our Ramapo Ridge students to take part in a number of different activities. I'm happy to report, at your tables, you'll see, there's a press release that's going to be sent out about that, along the lines of what the Gems Club is all about, and also the experience that took place at the T3 Building. So we're really excited about getting that information out to our community. And last but not least, I know I said two, it's more of a two, two point five. I just wanted to thank all those community members who came out to our first T-Bird Talk. Ms. Davenear, I'm sorry if I'm taking near thunder here. I'll just be very brief. It was great. Dr. Fair and I, as well as the Community Relations Committee, were able to speak to the community about various things that are happening, things that they feel are going well in a school district, but also things that we need to take a look at and refine moving forward. We have one member here, I'm not going to call her out, who was at that night and we greatly appreciated everything that was shared. We're going to take that information in. We're going to take a look at what we're doing and try to adjust and refine. And I'm happy to report, prior to the end of this year, we wanted to get one more in. So Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at six P.M., we're going to have our second T-Bird Talk at Mawa High School, the Thunderbird Think Tank. So everyone, please mark your calendars. We'll make sure that we send out reminders as well. It's open to all, not just our, our families of the students in our community, but also community members across Mawa. So just wanted to share that, that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Dr. Turo. Mr. Blaker, you have a presentation for us this evening.
Yes, just give me one moment to get it broken here. Okay, there we go. Uh, thank you very much for the patience while I was getting set up. Tonight is going to be the second presentation for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year budget. There will, this is the first, uh, the second, excuse me, we have four presentations. We did one at our last meeting on March sixth, where we introduced the preliminary budget that was sent down to the county office. They have that now. They're conducting the review of it. At that meeting, we spoke about some of the revenue sources and the ultimate tax impact that the preliminary budget has on the township. We'll spoke briefly about debt service and special revenue. For tonight, we're going to be discussing special education section of the budget, as well as tuition benefits and operations. And then we have agendas for the next two meetings as well. April seventeenth will highlight a few other areas. And then May first will be a summary of all the areas that we spoke about. And on May first, we'll also have the adoption of the final budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, the first section for tonight that we're going to highlight and discuss is special education. When we discuss special education, it's a very broad area. We're speaking about any out-of-district students who attend either a private school for the disabled or another public school that has a special ed program that we send to. We also discuss many related extracurricular services for both those that might be applicable for students outside of the district or inside of the district who are eligible for them. Uh, special education, we also cover the, um, the CST Office, as well as all case managers who manage the cases throughout the district. We have our half-day preschool program at Lenny P. Meadows Elementary School, self-contained classes, pre-K through twelve, um, for the self-contained population. And this includes the preschool, um, disabled program as well. We have fifty-nine students currently enrolled. And in total, the items that I discussed above represents about nineteen percent of the entire proposed budget for next year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, in comparison to the overall operating budget. Uh, digging a little bit deeper into the out-of-district costs for out-of-district tuition, uh, we currently have a hundred and nine students who attend a tuition-based school outside of Mawa. Of those hundred and nine, seventy of them are special education students, whose placement is determined by IEP meetings with the case manager and the student and student's parents. Uh, those placements can either be at a private school for the disabled, uh, could be at Burn County Special Services, one of their programs that they have throughout the county, uh, or it could be, as I mentioned before, at another public school here in the state that might have a program that is applicable for that student's needs. Uh, we also, in the total of a hundred and nine, we have thirty-nine regular education students. So these are all high school-age students who are attending either Burn County Technical and Vocational Schools or the Burn County Academies Program. Uh, within the thirty-nine, two are shared time with Mawa, so they're spending half the time at one of those schools, and then they're being bused back to Mawa for the rest of the day. And we also have two students, the first time we've had this in some years, we have two resident students who are attending a charter school. That is also, uh, a part of the out-of-district cost. For these tuition costs, and I, I want to point out, this is for the tuition only. This does not take into account any transportation. Uh, we'll be speaking about transportation costs at our next meeting on April seventeenth. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, uh, the budget for tuition is six million, two ninety-six, nine twenty-two. Uh, moving along to the next section for this evening is employee benefits. When we mention employee benefits, again, this could be a broad range of areas. Um, speaks to any benefits that employee has contractually. Uh, also health, prescription, dental, any medical benefits that employees are eligible for. Uh, work with compensation dues that we owe for our work with compensation, uh, fund. Social Security pensions that the district is responsible for. Any pension payments that we make on behalf of our members. This is for our PRS members, those who are non-certificated. Tuition reimbursement that is eligible for, then also payment for any accumulated sick time. Is all within the broad category of benefits. Uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, the employee benefits section represents about fourteen point three percent of the total operating budget, or just under eleven and a half million dollars. Of that eleven and a half million dollars, the largest piece of that are the medical benefits that our staff has. Uh, health benefits for staff are provided through the state of New Jersey through the, uh, School Employees Health Benefits Plan, the SEHBP. Within that plan, eligible employees have four different, um, plans they can choose from. It's either New Jersey Direct Ten, New Jersey Direct Fifteen, New Jersey Educators Plan, and the Guard State Plan. Uh, from, between the calendar year, this, um, plan, uh, these medical benefits from the state, they are on a calendar year. So any premium increases, we would see effect in January first when the calendar year rolls over. So back from the calendar year twenty-three to calendar year twenty-four, um, each one of those plans did have a increase in premiums for this year. New Jersey Direct Ten, Fifteen had a nine point three percent increase. Educators had a one point three percent increase, and Guard State had eleven point three. Uh, one, one thing to point out here, this is the first time in several years that there has been a differentiation between what the percentage increase have been for each of the plans. Typically, or previous, I should say, they would just pick one percentage. They apply evenly to all plans. This is the first year the state did something a little bit different, where they, um, changed what the percentage increase based on what the plan was. And for these plans, employees do make contributions to them as well. This isn't fully funded by the district. Uh, there is a contribution structure that employees make. It's based on a formula that comes from the state. Um, and there's also some modification in collective bargains for some of the, um, contributions as well. Uh, in addition to the health benefits that we just spoke about, there's also prescription benefits. For districts in Mawa, they are offered a private prescription benefit plan through Benicard. Uh, this is not, not through the state, like, uh, health benefits. Uh, and employees do contribute for the prescription benefits as well. It's the same formula, the same structure, uh, as they use for the health benefits. And then Delta, excuse me, Dental Benefits is also a private plan, Delta Dental. Uh, there is no contribution by staff for dental benefits here in Mawa. As I said, that eleven point five million, um, number that I spoke earlier, for all benefits in the district, for the medical benefits only, it's a little bit over nine million dollars, or eleven point four percent of the total operating budget. Some of the other areas within the budget and how they compare to the budget overall. We have, uh, these, I refer to these as our operation areas. So we have instructional support, curriculum guidance, multimedia services, and professional development. Um, those combined represent about four and a half million dollars, a little bit over, just under four point six, or five point eight percent of budget. Uh, school operations, so this is each school, their main offices, um, to operate each school is two point seven million. Uh, district operations and technology, three point two million, or four point one percent. Uh, maintenance, custodial, grounds, and security areas, that's a little bit over seven point two million, or nine point one percent. And then we have extracurricular and athletics, one point seven five million, or two point two percent of the overall budget. So those are the areas that I wanted to highlight for this evening's presentation. Uh, again, as I said, we're going to have one more presentation where I'm introducing some new areas of the budget on April seventeenth. Um, I'm going to highlight enrollment in the district and how that has, um, changed over the years. Uh, we're going to discuss personnel, capital outlay, and transportation areas of the budget, as well as some proposed summer projects that we have planned for the summer of twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, once again, as I said, at the May first meeting, that's where we will be having the final adoption of the budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Any questions from the board? Mr. Copeland?
Uh, when it comes to healthcare benefits, sorry. Uh, when it comes to healthcare benefits, you listed three or four different plans that our staff have, could, uh, choose from. Is there one plan that's more popular than another plan?
Um, the plans that have been around for the longest, which were the Direct Ten and Direct Fifteen, I'd probably say that has the most enrollees. Um, I don't know if I'd say that it's more popular, but it definitely has the most product because it's been around the longest. The other two plans, the other two plans, the, uh, New Jersey Educators Plan and the Guard State Plan are both relatively new. Um, New Jersey Educators became available about four years ago, three or four years ago. It was either twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty. And then the Guard State Plan just became available since twenty twenty-two. So because those are newer, um, they're not as heavily enrolled in. Um, so therefore, the Direct Ten and Fifteen, again, you could say popular, you could say most enrolled, but fact matters is because they've been around the longest. Um, a lot of times with health benefits, uh, employees find what they like, find what suits well for them, and stick with it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blaker. And, just, uh, could you come in and get the lights? All right, Dr. Fair, your report this evening?
Yes. So Gabby shared that, um, our Athletic Director, Mr. Pelletier, uh, he was the Athletic Director Sectional Award Recipient for North One from the Directors of Athletics Association of New Jersey. And he was honored, um, last week in Atlantic City at their sixty-third annual awards program. So congratulations to Roger for that honor. Uh, the second piece you'll notice, um, and as I announced at our last board meeting, we are in the midst of hiring season. So we are very excited that we have, uh, three new hires already on this evening's board agenda for recommendation for appointment at Mawa High School, Ramapo Ridge, and George Washington School for our next school year. So we're really excited, uh, we're really lucky to have them. And then we also have three retirements. So agenda items nineteen A, nineteen B, and nineteen C. Uh, we have, uh, three veterans that will be missed. So the first is Ms. Debbie Venvenuto. She's served as a teacher in Mawa for over two decades in Betsy Ross School, Lenny P. Meadows School, and most recently, George Washington. Debbie is passionate about special education, and using her creativity to plan hands-on, multisensory lessons, uh, has always been her specialty. Being a team player, Debbie will stop at nothing to get the job done, whether engineering a solution and building it herself, or simply dancing to get her students to smile and feel welcome. In retirement, Debbie looks forward to spending more time with her sons, Anthony and Dennis. Uh, she looks forward to doing more gardening, and she will continue to follow her passion of teaching in other unique ways long after Mawa. So we wish Debbie all of the best. Um, every year, we have a retiree celebration. Uh, we plan to keep that legacy alive in, uh, our board meeting in June. Uh, our next retiree to announce is Ms. Megan Monahan. She's been educator for thirty-one years. Twenty-eight of those teaching years have been in Mawa. Um, Meg has started out at Ramapo Ridge Middle School in nineteen ninety-six before moving to Mawa High School to take over our self-contained program. Since then, Meg has spent the majority of her career as an English Language Arts Special Education teacher at the high school. In addition to teaching, Meg served as softball and cheer coach, as well as transition coordinator for structured learning experiences at the high school. In Ms. Monahan's retirement, she's looking forward to spending time with her family. Specifically, uh, Meg loves watching her nieces and nephews play lacrosse. Uh, and she, uh, looks forward to visiting the Outer Banks more than she already does. Uh, she also looks to work with, uh, pre-service teachers in her retirement as well. And last but certainly not least, um, JK shared that they were humbled in assisting me write this goodbye message to Ms. Carol Murphy, who is the school social worker, um, in our district for over twenty-five years of her career. Uh, in that time, Mrs. Murphy was, has brought energy and advocacy to our child study team with an innate ability to step in and support in whatever way needed. Her passion for connecting with families and the rapport she has with students is evidence of one of her greatest gifts, her heart. Her office is known as a safe haven for both students and staff. Carol has shown an unwavering dedication in her role as a social worker for Mawa Township Public Schools. We are going to miss her presence and the wisdom she has shared to positively influence the lives of her students, families, and colleagues. We want to congratulate Ms. Murphy, though, on her retirement, and wish her well as she moves on to spend more quality time with her family and grandchildren in the years to come. So, uh, we wish Carol, Meg, and Debbie all the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I have a brief report this evening. Um, Mr. Pascal was proud to announce that a member of the class of twenty twenty-four has been designated a National Merrick Scholarship finalist. Merrick T. Sharp is a recipient of this honor. Merrick has been named as a member of the top sixteen thousand students from the original pool of one point five million juniors who took the PSAT in twenty twenty-two. The National Merrick Scholarship Program has now determined that sixteen thousand semifinalists, uh, have met all requirements to advance to finalist standing in the competition. Congratulations to Merrick on this wonderful achievement. Uh, and happy Easter to all, and, uh, enjoy spring break. And the extra snow day, that will be voted on this evening. Um, and that's my report. Um, do we have committee reports this evening? Mr. Copeland?
Sorry, uh, Transportation Committee met, uh, I guess it was last week, and just two highlights from the meeting. Um, the waiver process is underway. Uh, we've received a good handful of waivers. And basically, what a waiver is, for those that don't know, is you're waiving, uh, busing for your, for your child. Uh, because you don't need it, you're eligible for it, but you're telling the district that, hey, my child will never use the bus or doesn't need the bus at this time, uh, take them off the list. Um, we don't need it right now. Now, you do have the option of saying, hey, we need it, and come back into the program at a later date. But right now, you're saying, hey, we don't need it. So Ms. Spindler has been receiving waivers. Uh, the waiver's posted on the website. Principals will be sending it out as well. It's part of the kindergarten, uh, packet. So we are, we're trying really hard to get it out there so the public understands what it is and that it is an option. Because at the end of the day, we'll help our bus routes to better service the students that are using the buses. Lastly, sorry, just looking at my notes. Um, a couple of years ago, the district started sending out courtesy letters to fifth and eighth grade families, uh, for those families that will be not eligible for busing once they move up to sixth and ninth grades. Um, in the past, that wasn't done, and there was some confusion when, uh, the teacher assignments in August were sent out, and, uh, parents had to log in in real time, and were surprised that they didn't get busing. So, uh, courtesy letters will be going out, I think, later June, um, to those families who will not be eligible, uh, in the next school year for those buses, for the bus route. So, uh, for those families, keep an eye out. Um, and that's all I have for this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Do you have other committee reports? Ms. Davenear?
Uh, just wanted to, like, fill everybody in on the first T-Bird Talk that we had at the roundtable. Um, as Dr. Turo mentioned, we had it about two weeks ago. There was probably like twenty, twenty-five people who came in attendance, and I think personally, it was wildly successful. Um, there's something to be said about being in a very informal setting. Um, it's just a conversation. And, you know, as, as much as we love, um, when people come out to board meetings and we want you to continue coming to board meetings, they're very informational, it can be intimidating, um, I think, to stand up at the mic and talk, and all twelve of us are just kind of like staring at you. Um, so there's something really nice about coming to a roundtable. You're in a big, open room, and you can really talk about anything. Um, I appreciate how Dr. Turo, Dr. Fair kicked it off. We talked a little bit about what we're working on, talked a little about strategic planning. So we're going to go into the next cycle, um, the next cycle of that next year. And then just kind of opened the floor to, like, what are your thoughts? Um, it was really nice to see a very good mix of schools there. Um, so they had children in all of the schools. We had people who attended who don't have kids in the district yet. Um, there was a gentleman there who spoke a lot, you know, my daughter's really young. She'll be in the district in a couple of years, but I really wanted to come and see what this was all about. And that's really important, actually, like, making sure that we're putting the word out there that it's really open to the entire community. Doesn't matter if you have students. It, it, we just want the entire community to be able to come out. Um, I think there was a lot of really good, positive feedback. Uh, we talked a lot about a lot of great things that we're doing, and we talked a lot about things that we can definitely work on. We talk about it all the time, like, we're doing great things, but there's always room for improvement. So that feedback, I think, is really helpful. It was just really good spirit and dialogue. You know, we talked about everything from school rankings to transportation to extracurriculars. Um, we were there for a little over two hours, I think, which I think is a decent amount of time. And I'm really looking forward to the second one. I also just, like, a big shout-out to the entire administrative team. Um, everyone was there. So Mr. Blaker and Dr. Papino, Ms. Raisel, like, everyone came out to really be receptive to what was being said. So I really appreciate the time, uh, because it was definitely a late night for all of us. And as Dr. Turo said, the RSVPs are open for the next one. I'm really excited about it. Um, I'm hoping that we'll have even more people come out to talk to us and to hang out, and it'll be kind of wrapping up the school year. So it's a really good opportunity to come and just kind of voice, have your voice heard. Um, so again, I really appreciate you guys putting the work in to make sure that this event can happen, and I'm, I'm looking forward to more in the future.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad it was a great success. Ms. Gallo?
Sorry, I have, uh, two brief reports. Um, first, from Finance and Facilities. Um, we received further, uh, word that the HVAC project that we've undertaken at GW will be further delayed. So our expectation was that we were able, would be able to use the new air conditioning system in the fall. That is unlikely to happen unless there's some miracle with both equipment and cooperation with our utility. Um, on a more positive note, we are continuing the, the tradition of shared services with our township on a paving project, and I believe that bid is opening next week sometime on the second roundtable. Yeah, so it's coming up, and we'll hopefully have, uh, again, a productive partnership.
Before you go in, actually, I want to clarify that we will have air conditioning.
Oh, we will have air conditioning. It's just a new, it's just a new air conditioning system. So the old air conditioning system will do a perfectly fine job, but we've spent a small but we've spent a small fortune on air conditioning that, because of supply chain issues, and I can't say many positive things about our utility, but has prevented us from using the new system. There will be air conditioning. There are four items on the agenda tonight that are related to facilities. Eighteen CC, which is for wireless lighting control system at the stadium at the high school. A renewal, eighteen Z for pump tonian food services for annual renewal. Eighteen T, a big shout out to MSF for raising money for grants. The MSF grants are in eighteen T. And eighteen U is a renewal of our real-time information system, which we use for many, many functions in the district. Quick report on negotiations. We continue to have dialogue with all our groups. We anticipate that there will be two items on an April agenda, one related to, let's call it, old business with our agreement with the MEA. And then another agreement hopefully in place by April seventeenth. And that leaves one out pending a little bit. But that's my report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gallow? Do we have any other reports this evening? Okay. Quickly, from Instruction and Curriculum and Special Education. We met our March meetings, early March. One of the things that we discussed, Lisa Rizzo came and spoke to us about the New Jersey Department of Education monitoring that they will be doing of our child study team. Now, IEPs, which stands for Individualized Education Plans, will be monitored on a state level every six years. And we will be up for that monitoring soon. Areas that they look at and review are least restrictive environment, IEP components, IEP implementation evaluation process, age sixteen transition, discipline, restraint, and seclusion. There's a Tier One desk monitoring, and that's evaluation of specific cases. And hopefully, we don't get to a Tier Two, which is some onsite monitoring. So hopefully, we get through Tier One with flying colors and don't get to a Tier Two. But that's something that we need to know is happening. The other information that was shared was regarding our learning management system called Aludo. Mr. Kalman, am I saying it correctly? Pronouncing it properly, came to share with us that this is basically a platform to meet state mandated training requirements, and it provides a personalized PD professional development for teachers and offers comprehensive, like, data analytics. So it's really a platform where we can store all the professional development. And it can also, we can upload the Maua-generated videos that teachers do, supervisors do, and it will be used for, you know, multiple purposes: new teacher orientation, state mandated trainings, SCL coaching, generate professional development days, district policies, Psyop training, et cetera. And it will be rolled out with the state mandated trainings. So there is a cost to that in the first year of about twenty-five thousand approximately. And then subsequent years, it's about thirteen to fifteen thousand for this platform. But it will be very user-friendly. It will allow our teachers and supervisors to go directly to one place. We've had multiple different systems, but this is trying to streamline and be more efficient. So that's all I have for my report. Do we have board member remarks this evening? Mr. De Silva?
Just want to give a quick plug for the Thunderbird Partnership Program. I had, last Wednesday, I got to visit Ms. Bogarty's AP government politics class and talk a little bit about my experience with lobbying and advocacy in Washington and in Trenton. And, you know, it was, I think it's an interesting topic. The kids had a lot of really great questions. There was some great conversation. It was a really cool experience. I know pretty much everybody on the board has thrown your hat in there as a volunteer, you know, to, into the, into the pool there. I would say to the public, you know, if this is open to everybody, you know, go up on the website, and you can put your information in there, and it goes into a pool, kind of what your, you know, area of expertise might be. And the teachers can go in and take a look and see, you know, if they have something coming up that they might be able to invite somebody into the class. And it really kind of, you know, it goes, you know, from outside of just, you know, a conversation in the class. We have somebody come in and actually, you know, kind of brings that to life. So it was, it was a great opportunity. Glad that I did it. I hope I'm invited back. It was just awesome opportunity.
Did you get your reviews, Mr. De Silva?
No. I haven't got the reviews. They're saying great things.
I'm sure you did very well. That's interesting. And it's actually a different part of, like, what you do, right? I mean, you have an entrepreneurial business, but it's interesting that you were talking about government and policy and stuff. So that's, it's, you know...
Having a, you know, owning a business lately, you're, you know, constantly under attack. It feels like. And, you know, you have to take an active role in, you know, defending what you've built. And really, you know, a lot of what we talked about in class was education for the people who, you know, who make the laws that we have to abide by. A lot of times, they have no idea, like, what the actual practical application of this is going to be. So a lot of, you know, lobbying and advocacy is really education. You know, we see it all the time with stuff that comes down from Trenton. We look at it, we're like, what were they thinking? They really, you know, think that what they put forth is really well thought out, and, you know, they don't have, it's not possible to have every experience to know everything for all the things that you touch. So that's, you know, that was a lot of the conversation today.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Copeland?
Just two really quick things. First of all, I wanted to give a big shout out to the high school and Ridge Drum Program. Les Mis and Beauty of these Juniors were absolutely amazing. Congratulations to Mr. Nam and Ms. Walter and all the staff that was involved. They prepared the students very, very well. And when the students took the stage, they absolutely killed it. I heard one night at the high school, I think they broke attendance records for Les Mis. I don't think they sold out, but they had a lot of people. And every single performance, I think I was there for three or four of them, they were very, very well attended. And not to, you know, do anything to the class of ninety-three, but I heard that this was the best musical ever produced in Maua. So, sorry, Ben. Just saying.
I think that since they've been keeping records, and they started in '94.
They started in ninety-four.
If you want to see a great eighth-grade show, just see Grand Po Ridge Grease from my little media.
Google it.
Yeah, it's actually on YouTube.
Beauty of these Juniors, pretty good.
Yeah, it was very good.
Also, just want to personally give a big thank you to Ms. Bogarty and Mr. Pascal. For those that don't know, the junior prom was last week. It was originally scheduled to be held at Brooklyn Lake Hilton, and about a month and a half, two months ago, they shut their doors, leaving our juniors with no place to go. And Ms. Bogarty and Mr. Pascal, and I'm sure I'm missing other people, so I apologize, so everyone who was involved. They jumped through hoops, and they found the Crown Plaza and suffered to, you know, find an alternative location, and it turned out really, really well. Kids had a great time. So just a big thank you to them for all their extra effort and work to make sure that it was a very special night for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any other board member remarks? Mr. Hughes?
So a couple of weeks ago, I met with Dr. Bavino and Nicky Van Ness to discuss the civics curriculum that we provide here in the Maua School District. Conversation, as I mentioned, in late January, I believe that was the meeting. So Governor Murphy, he laid out a proposal in his State of the State address on January ninth to include sixteen-year-olds to be eligible to vote in local elections, specifically for the VET elections. And just like any other, you know, government rule, it doesn't stay for one thing. It obviously always evolves. So I just wanted to make sure that Maua had a very, a strong curriculum when it came to civics education, to make sure that Maua's going to have the most prepared kids if, if this, if sixteen-year-olds are able to go to the ballot box at some point. Although I disagree with that, I do think that we should be making sure that the Maua kids are as prepared as they should be or can be and informed as they can be, should they be eligible to go to the ballot box. So we discussed at every single level what the civics curriculum looks like. We also discussed ways to enhance it, including for sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-olds, positions, especially for eighteen-year-olds, that they can actively run for right outside of high school or even when they're eighteen years old, to be a representative. We also talked about, another spot that we can enhance is more instruction on your state and local government. A lot of times, especially, for example, county races. A lot of times, your county races are overlooked, or many people just don't quite understand what those county positions do. So we did have a conversation on how we can enhance the curriculum for state and local government.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Chris, we're going to see sixteen-year-olds voting in twenty-four.
You know, I don't know if we're going to see them vote in twenty-four. I don't, I haven't seen anything on the agenda in Trenton, but I wouldn't be surprised. You know, very often, there's always last-minute bills that are submitted in Trenton Committee. So I always have my eyes out to see those last-minute bills that are submitted, but I haven't seen anything yet. And, you know, to Rick's point about Trenton, too, you know, they may, they may think that they have, or they think they're doing the best they can for citizens, but very often, they make, like, a little bit more difficult or maybe are on the wrong track.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go on to old business. Our minutes from March sixth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion? Mr. Gallow, seconded by Ms. Jansen. Mr. Bleecker?
Thank you. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Davenaro?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Epstein.
And Dr. Morthe?
Yes. All right. Let's move on to new business and take A to C.C. I need a motion. Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Ms. Bleecker?
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes. Thank you to the MSF for the grant money.
Ms. Davenaro?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe?
Yes. Now, let's take new business, nineteen A, B, and C. We'll take those separately as our retirements. I totaled up, that's like a total of seventy-nine years of, you know, dedication to our district in total. That's pretty amazing. So we wish them all well and happy retirement. I need a motion for Mr. Gallow, seconded by Mr. Hughes. So Mr. Bleecker, nineteen A, B, and C.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes. And congratulations on your retirements.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Davenaro?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, wish those three retirees of this agenda a long, happy, healthy retirement. Like Dr. Morthe said, it's almost eighty years of experience that's, that we're, there are big shoes to fill. And I, I missed the last meeting. Also, when I throw, you know, Ms. Walter in on that, we're, we're running out of teachers' beds that were here when we were.
I noticed.
You know what that means, Chris.
Yeah, I'm getting old. So congratulations to those folks and wish you well.
Thank you. And lastly, Dr. Morthe?
Yes. All right. And then now, we'll take nineteen D to G.G. Need a motion? Mr. Gallow, seconded by Mr. Copeland. Ms. Bleecker?
Mr. Gallow?
Yes, and thank you, Dennis, for keeping so busy.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes, and big shout out to Brian DiPaolo for being out here for Assistant Boys Lacrosse Coach.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Jansen?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Davenaro?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe?
Yes. All right. Let's move on to public questions and comments. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw oh one six seven. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Hughes. And we are officially open to the public.
Good evening. My name is Danielle. I have written my, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I've written my last name and street address on the form. Thank you. I have two children that attended school in Nape, J.K., and the Ridge. I'm speaking tonight about a sensitive and personal topic. This topic may be against the popular views of the general public. Does anybody know what the acronym O-R-O-G-D stands for? Rapid Onset Gender Dysphoria. This term was coined by Dr. Littman, a physician scientist who studied at UDMJ in Matson. In two thousand and eighteen, she published her research on the topic, which had been peer-reviewed. In her research, she discusses elements of peer contagions and cultural enthusiasm, fads, crazes, which have infiltrated cubes and children's lives through all types of social media. She also discusses the impact COVID had in this arena. I bring this up because this is a real phenomenon that can sometimes be connected with underlying mental health issues that are affecting our children. I am not prejudiced or have any ill will to any adults who live their lives as another gender. I do, however, feel that we should not affirm any particular way of thinking within the school setting and leave these very personal decisions to the family unit. Instead of a policy of secrets, I encourage a policy of open communication with the parents, students, and school. I had to sign parental notes to allow my child to watch a PG movie in a class or sign field trip forms to allow my child to attend an outside school event. These signatures account for my notification and consent. I was also notified that my child kept wearing a hat in the classroom and had received a few lashed attentions. If we need to inform parents, these simple things, why do we not have to inform them that their child may want to change their gender, name, pronouns, or why do these policies get to determine the line? And why are they inconsistent? I would like to think I speak for the majority of parents that we want our children to be happy, healthy, and safe. We try to do what's in their best interest, but we trust our gut when we know that something is off. If parents don't have the visibility to what's happening in the school where their kids spend two thousand one hundred eighty-four hours per year and where other adults are guiding them during this period of time, how can we make the best and most informed decisions for them? I urge the board to revise five-seven-five-six gender identity I urge the board to revise five seven, five six gender identity and expression policy and work with parents to provide open communication about their children. Communication is imperative in resolving conflict. This policy had detrimental effects on my family. It was gut wrenching to see my child struggle with the fallout from school staff providing different guidance than our family. Many heartbreaking issues ensued. It exacerbated underlying mental health issues and fed a delusion that was not real. If I would have known when these adults at the school had started calling my child by a different gender name, I would have had a better idea when certain issues arose. My child is not transgender and has no previous history. Because of this, I have chosen to remove my children from the Mawa public school system. As a single working mom, I moved to this town because of the great schools. Now I travel many miles a day outside of town to ensure my children have an amazing private education and support system where the school administration is on the same page as the parents. My kids are now thriving and healthy. I'm thankful I can afford these luxuries where I know many others may not be able to. Again, it is my opinion that parents should have the full choice to guide their children through erratic and emotional adolescent stages the way they see fit. Parents have the full history of their child's social, emotional, behavioral, spiritual and physical health and know their child's best. The more information we have, the better. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Beth Manzella. I'm on Walnut Street West. I wrote it down here. I come to you as a proud, longtime Mawa resident, having grown up here. I am also a teacher at Pasgak Hills High School for the past nineteen years and most importantly, a parent to two young children, Gianna in fourth grade at JK and Anthony in second grade at George Washington. I stand before you tonight on behalf of many Mawa parents with a deep concern that affects the very foundation of our educational system, class size. When this issue came to our attention this past fall, it started with the possibility that our current second graders at GW would not be granted the third section of third grade like many other classes before them had. Our grade currently has the largest class size in the school with twenty three general ed students and up to twenty six with other students coming in and out throughout the day and week plus pairs. That is a lot of people in one room. In speaking with other parents across the district, we have learned that GW is the only elementary school with two sections of second grade and that our schools are very crowded. As educators, administrators and parents, it is our duty to ensure that every student receives the attention, resources and support they need to thrive academically and personally. Yet the issue of large class sizes threatens to compromise the quality of education our children are receiving. As we have heard from administrators, this is a numbers game. But our children are more than just a number filling a desk to max out the quota. It's about what is best for the students and grade as a whole. The detrimental effects of large class sizes on student learning are well documented. Research consistently shows that smaller class sizes lead to better academic outcomes, increased student engagement and improved behavior in the classroom. When classes are overcrowded, teachers struggle to meet the diverse needs of their students and individualized attention becomes a scarce commodity. As a result, some students inevitably fall through the cracks, their potential stifled by an environment that simply cannot accommodate their unique learning styles and needs. Having an appropriately sized class allows teachers to employ important teaching strategies that help our students learn. Smaller classes also let teachers work closely with the adults at home to improve school community involvement strategies. Teacher morale therefore improves. Teachers in small classes can devote more time to individualized attention, engage in more time on task instruction and identify precisely and early those student learning problems that can be remediated before a student falls too far behind. Across the district, we have seen more and more students struggling with regulating emotions and other executive functioning skills. Small class sizes allow teachers to attend to the emotional needs of students in a safe environment while still attending to the academic needs of all students. Student behavior and achievement benefit from improved classroom environments. As a teacher, I can tell you that we already are stressed with meeting the ongoing demands of our educational system. Classes maxed out is only burning teachers out faster. Continuing down this path and you will see many talented teachers leave or retire earlier than in years past. By taking proactive measures to reduce class sizes and enhance the quality of education in our schools, we lay the foundation for a brighter future for generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manz. I think Dr. DiToro had a.
Ms. Manz, I'll thank you so much for taking the time to write that. Let me just give you a little bit of context. I appreciate all of your points and you're absolutely correct. Along the lines of the second grade class at GW, the issue that we had this year, you're absolutely right. It's a twenty three right now. Along the lines of the twenty six, that's due to we have students coming in for special classes, art, PE, music and things like that. You're right, pairs do come with them. The year, during the year, I'm sorry, in the beginning of the year, we started with twenty one. We had move ins that then increased it to twenty three. To speak to the numbers game, and I don't want it to be so impersonal. The only piece that I can speak to with the numbers game, and I hate that term, is being a part of Betsy Ross and GW, it's a, it's a, it's a really nice small school feel. But with that, sometimes comes a challenge of when we have move ins, unlike schools that have larger sections, it does make a bigger impact on the class sizes as opposed to when you go to JK and you have a move in in fourth or fifth grade and you have nine or ten sections, you're able to distribute it across and the, and the population doesn't increase as much. What I can tell you, when the number did hit twenty three, I believe in January, Ms. Kobaki is constantly advocating for your school and I greatly appreciate that. She's always looking at what the class sizes are and what she can do differently. Understanding that it happened mid-year, what she was able to do was bring in a para or two during core time to bring down that student to teacher ratio. Now I'm not going to sit here and say that is the fix, but I'm saying mid-year, we're going to do everything we can to address it to allow for the best instructional model possible. Along the lines of being a district wide concern, it is not. What I am happy to report is across the district, every single year, what we do is we look at forecasting for next year. What the current enrollment is, how many sections there are, that's what we're currently doing right now. And we're identifying areas that could be at that higher level, twenty three, twenty four. And that's not what we want. And I agree with you. So at this time, we're working collectively to make sure that we're addressing the situation. I don't know who told you in February that we're not open to opening that section next year. I'm sorry that you got that information. That's not correct. We are absolutely open to it. We're looking at all the different aspects of staffing for next year. I can't sit here and guarantee anything at this point because the budget has not been completely presented. But I do want you to know it's absolutely at the forefront of our focus.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just a quick question on, on the class. So do we have a situation with aides coming in or other professionals to come in to help with the class as well? I'm just speaking from when I, oh, okay, probably because I just remember.
When you said para or para professional, that's a teacher.
It says you're like. Okay, seeing no one else coming forward at the moment, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copland and second by Mr. Hughes. All right, we do not require another executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn. Mr. De Silva and second by Mr. Kizmarski. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.